I am so fed up with people allotting and giving accolades to Muriel Bowser. And she's an absolute failure when it comes to law enforcement. Two police chiefs, Kathy Lanier and Peter Newsome are now exiting stage left. And that's just in her first term and a half, ladies and gentlemen. She's trading police chiefs like she's wearing Gucci shoes, you know, just in and out, gone. She's an absolute failure when it comes to law enforcement. And now you have a city council that wants to let loose 500 convicted felons on the street of the District of Columbia. I want to introduce to some and present to others a young woman who is fighting the good fight to make certain that that doesn't happen. And it begins with a protest tomorrow in front of the Wilson Building, thirteen fifty Pennsylvania Avenue Northwest DC at four PM DC, December tenth, twenty twenty. And I'm telling you, ladies and gentlemen, in all seriousness, if you're in the DC metropolitan area, DC, Maryland, Virginia, and West Virginia, you need to be at that protest tomorrow at four o'clock. And the vision is very simple because that killer may someday be killing yours. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to introduce to some and present to others a great young woman in her own right. Nardine Jeffries, it is a great pleasure and honor to have you on the air with us tonight.
Thank you. It's my honor to be here.
Ms. Jeffries, they would say to you and to me that we don't understand black life, that we don't understand the fact that the system is out to get our black children. And I want to give you the opportunity, if you would speak to the fact that you are not out to get black men and you're not out to get black young men.
That's almost a joke to me because for anyone to say that we don't know community, we are the black community. I am a black woman. I had a black child. And you're absolutely right. I am not out to get the black males or females. But with this irresponsible bill that they're trying to pass and they're close to pushing passing it, they're, they're the ones that don't understand black lives. Because you're basically saying, instead of doing the proper protocols to prevent the type of violence that the district is seeing, you rather just give them a free pass to rape, kill, violently steal things from people and walk the streets again. So it is the other way around. We get it very, very well. We understand it. We walk in these shoes. We are the voice for the voiceless. So we, we understand it more than anyone.
Well, you understand Black Lives Matter. Basically, they're saying at this point that the police are just picking on these convicts. They're, they're, they are picking on the criminals. They're not focused on giving attention. And basically, if we were to rehabilitate, if we were to provide housing and food and jobs and things of that nature, then these men would not go out and kill. Do you believe that?
First of all, I guess yes and no, more no. First of all, everything starts at home. That's number one. And Black Lives Matter, I understand was formed because of police brutality. But it's almost comical because black lives only seem to matter when law enforcement kills a black life. They don't seem to be as interested when black on black crimes are happening every day in their own community. So I think that's almost, you know, a joke in itself. But there is a responsibility, of course, for politicians to do certain things and, and elected official people in powerful seats to do certain things for the community, absolutely. But at the same token, a, a part of that responsibility is to basically held accountable these agencies. And when you have an agency such as Departmental Youth Rehabilitation Services, DYRS, that is not doing anything but breeding murderers in there, they're getting plenty of funding and they have plenty of staff in there to do the things that need to be done. And these kids are in and out like, like they're going to an amusement park. So no, to certain, to a lot of extent, you can't say if they had housing and all these things, that they could do X, Y, and Z. That's almost like saying in the district, so many people need to be working in these government agencies and that's that. Well, that's, that's true to a certain extent, but if you don't have, if you can't read, if you can't write, if you don't know how to type, how are you going to get positions? So again, everything kind of falls back on, back on the parenting. There's some blame to go around in, in the commu-, uh, the elected officials, of course. But there's also blame to go on it right in the households. Why is it that you're not raising your children to have respect like our children had? Our, your daughter went off to college, was doing well. My daughter was on her way to college. So guess what? Your daughter was a productive member of society and she was doing the right things, just as mine was, even though she hadn't gotten to the, the level of adulthood. So how can you say that it's the responsibility, it's not the government's responsibility to raise your children?
Exactly. Nor is it a government's responsibility to give a free pass to an individual simply because they happen to be a certain age when it comes to murder.
Absolutely.
I, I want to ask you because you are a beautiful young woman yourself.
Thank you.
Came out of college. In that picture right there, can you tell us about your daughter?
Yes, this is, um, Brechelle, my beautiful daughter. And I don't just say that because she was mine or is mine, but she was really a sweet spirit. Everyone that knew Brechelle can speak that, um, her pediatrician and I even still keep in touch, some of her teachers. Uh, she was just a very giving person. And, and again, that goes back to the parenting and the village that raised her. And I understand there's always exceptions, but she was very sweet. Very helpful, very thoughtful. She was kind of like the little chef of the neighborhood. The kids would come and gather. She cooked for the, her little group of friends or we had pizza nights on Friday. And she just, you know, I taught her to, to look out for people because you never know when you're going to need someone to look out for you. She, she loved hanging out with me. We had a lot of mother-daughter time. I don't know if you can see this photo back here, but this was, um, she and I on, on my motorcycle. We were, we had taken out, that was our last ride. She was killed the next week. She loved spending time with me doing mother-daughter things. If it were just curling up in the bed, having movie nights, she loved to do my nails and my toes. She was very artistic. She could draw really well. She loved reading. I mean, she just, she had such a bright future. She was just, like I said, just a loving, gentle little, little being. She was a small, little person. But she had a big heart and a beautiful smile. And no matter what Brechelle was going through, you would never know. She always smiled. She was, you know, just a, really just a vibrant from birth to now, to her death, you know, she just, she was just brilliant, very intelligent. She had just turned sixteen in, uh, December twenty-third and she was killed in March. So she was barely sixteen.
Can you tell us what happened on the day that she was killed?
Yes, the day that Brechelle was killed, she and, um, a lot of young people in the community had attended a funeral for a young man by the name of Jordan Howell. And he had been killed by these same individuals eight days prior. No one knew who had attended the funeral. And they were planning to come to the funeral and shoot up the funeral. They did not secure a vehicle in enough time. But they did find that young people gathering at the, on the little corner where they, you know, right across from where, what used to be a Domino's Pizza where she had just bought pizza for some of the guys out there because they didn't have money. Um, or so they say, you know, because everyone knew Bree was going to go and she was going to take care of them. So she had just gotten them a pizza and was on her way back home when this van full of individuals came down the street and saw them. Some had on the T-shirts with the young man's face on it. And from what I was told by the prosecutors, they received a call from someone in, in that area stating that the young man had friends and people down here mourning for him. So come get them. Because the way I understood it, eight days prior, a, a fake bracelet had been stolen by one of the defendants, uh, one of the killers. And he had stolen it from someone else, but some young lady had taken it by mistake or whatever from their little party. So he was enraged that his little fake girl bracelet was missing. And he went out, you know, called his brother and they started shooting. And that's how the first young man got killed. And his stepbrother and best friend retaliated. So then they came to retaliate eight days later to, and my daughter happened to be out there. And it was nine people shot, um, on South Capitol Street. My daughter was shot in the head with an AK forty-seven and in the shoulder with a nine millimeter, extended clip. Her best friend was shot in the shoulder with the AK forty-seven and in the knee with the nine millimeter. They had three different caliber weapons. One young man was shot in the head. He survived. Another one, it was just, it was horrible. It was just, remember it just like it was yesterday. I was working out and I had that motherly instinct that my daughter needed me and I started calling her. And as soon as I started calling her and I got the voicemail the first time, I knew something was wrong. And the person I was working out with, her phone started ringing. And she was just like, what, what? And I could hear her daughter screaming in the phone and her daughter was with my daughter. And I just grabbed the phone and said, where's Brechelle? She just screamed, everyone's dead, everyone's dead. And I said, where is Brechelle? And she's like, they shot her. She's shot. And I, I just, I, I don't even, it was like I just went crazy. I ran out. I didn't have my shoes on. I had just finished working out. I cut it short. My feet were hurting. I was getting ready to put, you know, change into my street clothes. And I just bolted and was like a mad woman and tried to run, you know, we drove a ways because we were a little ways. And then I got out and I just started running barefoot down the street, you know, screaming and praying the whole way over there like, please let my daughter be alive. And, you know, God, I don't care if she's going to be a vegetable. I don't care if she's going to be handicapped. Just please don't let my daughter be dead. And I just kept calling her and calling her and it just kept going to voicemail. And I mean, I knew before I got there, but I just wanted to believe I was in denial.
Exactly. Now, a lot of people, because this is what I hear. My wife and I haven't gone through the experience of having to sit in a courtroom and watch the actual defendants under prosecution for the murder of our daughter. They haven't even found, uh, the killers at this particular juncture. But often it is said, for you, the mother, it is relief that we found the killers and we have arrested them and they are being prosecuted. Is that a relief to you as a mother?
No, not for me. I, I know a lot of family, there were a lot of families involved in this shooting. And I know after we finally had, um, the trial and they had been convicted, they said they felt like they had closure. There is no closure for me. Because my child is permanently gone. These creatures are still in a prison, uh, they're still breathing, they're still eating. And, and to be honest, they're still violating people because before they were even, we finished the trial, they had already assaulted other people while they were locked up in DC jail. So no, it's not a relief for me. And, um, I'm sorry that, you know, your, your daughter's case is, has not been closed. And, and I'm sorry for a lot of unsolved cases. And I know it's different for everyone. I know some people say that, you know, that they're, they're glad to, I will say this, I'm glad that these vile things are no longer on the street and they cannot hurt anyone else. But let's be clear, again, the system didn't do their job because two of these individuals were on probation. They allowed one off of probation three days before this murder took place and another one a week or two prior. And they had, again, gun charges. So if you're getting another gun charge, why are you allowing them to come off of probation?
Exactly. Now, I want to show.
So no, there is no closure for me because like I said, my daughter's permanently dead. And not only is she dead, to sit in that courtroom and, and be smirked at and laughed at and kisses blown at you and other, um, victims' families in there by these things was just, it, it was horrible. I mean, they just had no kind of, they just didn't care. You know, it was like they sat there for a while trying to play the part. And then as soon as they were, you know, getting to the end, and I guess they figured out they weren't going to walk away, they just got more and more disrespectful. Sometimes their families were disrespectful and making passes at my ex-husband, my daughter's father. And he just, it, it was, it was just madness. I mean, it was just, I would never want to go through that again. And they had the nerve to appeal. I had gone to an appeal, but I thought that this was over for me. But here we are, thanks to the dumb DC council with their ignorant selves.
And so Charles Allen is a gentleman who comes up with the legislation here that has nothing to do with nonviolent offenders. We're, we're not talking about individuals who stole a coat from Macy's. We're not talking.
Absolutely. No, we're not talking about that.
We're talking about hardened, and I want you to take a look at that picture of that gentleman smiling. That's a young man who was up on two murder counts in a trial. And what he did at the end of the trial is exactly what Ms. Jeffries explained. He began to smile because he knew that he would be back on the streets someday. And this is the whole thing. And, and I'm encouraging people, if you live in DC, Maryland, Virginia, or West Virginia, you have a duty to be at thirteen fifty, uh, Pennsylvania Avenue Northwest DC tomorrow at four PM. Because I, I want you to understand, your daughter died on South Capitol Street. My daughter died on Good Hope Road. We are not that far away from Maryland. And in fact, there are a number of individuals who have lived in DC, gone to other places and killed people. Recidivism is a serious matter for violent criminals. And we gave you the statistics and I want to give some statistics right now, forgive me on this one. Number one, when you mentioned recovered firearms. Now, in the District of Columbia, if someone recovers a firearm, they can be out and on the street in twenty-four hours. Twenty-four hours, literally. And two thousand one hundred and ninety-one got firearms. They complain about gun violence, but two thousand one hundred and ninety-one firearms were recovered. That means that they have illegal ownership. This is not a registered gun. This is not Joe and Mary Q Public, uh, who have locked away their gun in a box and will take it out to defend their home. These are individuals who go behind the back of a seven eleven and for fifty bucks get themselves a firearm to carry out their duty for the night. Two thousand one hundred and ninety-one in twenty seventeen, nineteen hundred and twenty-eight. And quite frankly, the same people who are being put in and out in twenty-four hours are the same people recidively, over and over again, getting the firearms. In addition to that, when you're looking at the twenty-year homicide trend, right now, in the District of Columbia, in twenty eighteen, there were a hundred and sixty murders. Today, there are over a hundred and ninety murders in the District of Columbia. Muriel Bowser has never had a sub one hundred year in her tenure. In addition to that, when you're looking at the whole idea of murders, we're up nineteen percent over last year, nineteen percent. And this ain't even Christmas. What's even worse, under Muriel Bowser in this city council, is the fact that we had a ninety-five percent, ninety-six percent closure rate on homicides back in two thousand and eleven. Today, the closure rate is less than seventy percent. In a public or private school, less than seventy percent is a D. That means that the same people who are doing the crimes know they're going to get out, know they're going to get in the street and know they're going to do it again. And the innocent victim doesn't matter.
Absolutely not.
Chanus didn't matter. It didn't matter to these people at all. And yet, this is what the DC council has done. And forgive me on this, I, 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 I'm doing a monologue at this particular moment, but I'm very irate about this because I don't want my daughter to be your daughter, to be someone else's daughter. We were unable to walk our daughters down the aisle for their weddings. They will never have our grandchildren. They have been taken from us in terms of academic and professional achievement. All of that has been taken from us. And yet, because you reach a magical age of twenty-five, murder doesn't mean the same thing. When it comes to the whole idea, uh, and I just want to read this from the US Attorney's Office. Uh, the United, US Attorney's Office states, "The proposed legislation before the DC City Council helps violent offenders with little or no benefit to nonviolent offenders. It is unlike other criminal justice reform initiatives nationwide, including the Federal First Step Act, which Donald Trump got passed. This proposed legislation is not evidence-based, does little to protect the rights of victims, and comes at a time when the homicide rate in the District of Columbia has increased significantly." I want you to address, Nardine, how irresponsible must a group of people be in order to appease Black Lives Matter and to follow out their ideology regarding giving rights to the criminal over rights to the victim?
They must have absolutely no brain cells because I can't understand, just like you read off, where the, the district has the highest, highest murder rates at this time. And you think the answer to that is, instead of combating crime and trying to bring it down, oh, let's, let's reward not only bad decision-making, but deadly decision-making. And, and you're right when you say that everybody needs to take this seriously. This is just, this is not just a District of Columbia problem. We're called the DMV for a reason. You can just walk across the line from South Capitol Street into Maryland. You could just, you know, a, a short drive or a subway ride, you're in Virginia. And that's where a lot of, you know, them go to, to get those guns. Because there's no, you know, a lot of the Walmarts at one time in the Dick's Sporting Goods store, you can just go in and get a gun. There, you know, and then you have the gun show. There's no background checks and things like that. But the point is criminals are.
There are background checks, shows you, you can't get your gun for three days. And a, a lot, a lot of the.
There's a lot of them that, that they may say that, but I have seen plenty of people walk in and just get guns and come right out. They don't ask you anything. You got the money, you getting the gun.
Well, in, in the legal system, you do have to go through certain, um, background checks and things of that nature. But this is what happens with us. They tell us to focus on the gun. When people are stabbing people to death as well, you know, or baseball bat, or, or other things, they tell us to focus on the gun. And what we should be focused on is the person. Because it is the person that chose to use the weapon of choice to eliminate our children's lives. And quite frankly, they knew that they were doing it in an illegal fashion. They chose an illegal way to do it. The people who do it rightly are less likely. In fact, the, a statistic is like ninety-nine percent that if you're going to register a gun, you're normally not going to commit a crime. There are individuals who are out here who at age sixteen have access to a nine mil. Now, that's extraordinary in our sense, but it's also extraordinary in the sense that we as parents of children who have been killed, no one's asking you, was sixteen the right age to kill Rochelle? Are, are they at this point?
There is no right age to kill anyone. You know, not, not, not senseless and cold-blooded, no. I mean, if you're defending yourself and you happen to, you know, fighting for your life, someone gets injured or loses their life, that's something different. But to intentionally drive down the street in broad daylight with three weapons, one of them hanging over, uh, uh, out of a sunroof, the other's out of the front window and the back window, and you're just indiscriminately spraying bullets and, and, you know, at any, in everyone. And that's why the, the weapon of choice is a gun because number one, it's very easily accessible. Number two, most of them have no experience in shooting or they don't know how to really, you know, aim at a target. So they like these automatic weapons because all you have to do is push your trigger and a whole bunch of bullets are going to spray out. And you're guaranteed to hit someone, even if it's not the someone you were intending on shooting and killing. And no, there, there is no right age to kill someone. My thing is, you know, I don't know why they keep using these excuses of your brain isn't fully developed until you're twenty-five. Well, that may be, but guess what? You know right from wrong way before you're twenty-five.
Exactly. Now, I, I got to ask you, you're a very strong woman. You have taken on the great pains of life of losing your daughter. What message do you want to give to the American people? Because we're going to put this out tonight, uh, for the world to see. Now, Nardine, what is the message that you want to tell people about the mayor in the District of Columbia in this particular bill? And how important is it for them to be down there tomorrow supporting you?
Well, first of all, I don't even want to say they're supporting me because this isn't about me. This is way bigger than me. This is about all innocent civilian lives. So they need to be down there to support themselves, their families and their future families. Because if this bill goes through, we're all sitting targets. We already see what's happening without this bill in legislation. So can you imagine what's going to happen afterwards? So we're all just, you know, it's open season on us. So that's one of the messages is please, by all means, don't think this is a me thing or Brechelle thing because it's not. I can't do anything for Brechelle at this point. My sweet child has been slaughtered, like many others. So I can't save her. This is about trying to protect other citizens. I don't want another mother, a father, brother, sister, aunt, grandparent to go through this. This is not easy. You're, the, my exterior may look one way, but my interior does not coincide. The health issues that I have, the mental issues that I have is, it, it's unbearable. So you, you have to, you have to do something now. So please, I'm urging everyone to come out. And for Councilmember Allen, Charles Allen, you're just a disrespectful. And, and, and you know what? Let me back up a little bit. He's the one who introduced the bill, but I don't want to just point the finger at him. Let's, let's call out everyone. Vincent Gray, who co-signed this bill. Kenyon McDuffie, who co-signed this bill. Why? And then everyone that voted on it, Trayon White. You live in Ward Eight. You're the council member for Ward Eight where all of these murders are going on. So why would you think that makes any damn sense? It, it, it's just absurd. Mary Che is the only one who thought enough and had enough sense and wherewithal to say, this is not right. She even tried to put in some amendments in there to have them reach out to families and have some say from the families and they voted her down. So this is just irresponsible, disrespectful, disgusting, and a total slap in the face. We're coming up on the hardest time of the year, Christmas. Holidays are the toughest times of the year. Suicide rates are up. And, and this is what we're presented with? With open cases? With unsolved murders, with missing children, with, you know, and, and, and let's be clear, this isn't just about the, the gun violence piece. They're, they're talking about rapists. Whether they had a gun or not. Can you imagine being raped and, and surviving that? And, 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 and it's a failure to the system. When, when this happened to my child and other people's children, when we went to court, we were told by the prosecutors that these are the things that they're going to have to, the consequences they're going to have to pay for doing what they did, these egregious acts against these young individuals, unarmed, innocent. These egregious acts against these young individuals, unarmed, innocent individuals that were ambushed and slaughtered in the nation's capital. And guess what? They've lied. They're revoking that privilege and those rights that we were given. And that's not right. And guess what? They were convicted in two thousand and twelve. We're in twenty twenty, going into twenty twenty-one, so guess what? And just a few years, they'll be able to walk. And I guarantee you that if this legislation goes through, those vile individuals who also had other murders on them, but when they brought them to court, witnesses were being threatened and bullied, and they were afraid to testify, so they let them walk. And they kept letting them walk and letting them walk until they did this crime, and they were finally put behind bars. So Councilmember Allen, Vincent Gray, Kenyon McDuffie, Trayon White, and Phil Mendelson, and everybody on that council that, uh, that agrees with this. These children, these young people, these innocent people's blood is on your hands. And Muriel Bowser, you need to get up and do something about it. I understand that the council is, it, you know, like, I, I try, I don't even wanna get myself worked up, but it is so disrespectful. And DC is a laughing stock of the nation at this point. It's bad enough that, you know, things are the way they are in the country, but this is the nation's capital? These are where the legislation, the laws are put on the books, and this is the best you could do? So what are you telling the, 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 the next set of criminals? And, and you see why the guy is smirking in the picture. Just like they smirked at me, blew kisses at me and, and the other victims, just plain disrespectful.
Exactly.
Because they know they're out of prison sooner than, than later. But guess what? Kind of, you know, you give them what the victims don't get, and that's another last chance, another chance. They don't get that. That's his permit.
Nardine, I gotta ask you here, a, a lot of people are going to say, well, I'm the mother of a murderer. Don't I get a chance to see my son again? Don't I get a chance to hold my?
Yes, you do. Yes, you do. Go down to the prison where they locked him up at. This is, if, if, first of all, DC can't even handle the things that are going on in the district. You have missing children still. Ralisha Rudd, where, where's the funding for that? You have these advocates going, asking for help to, to fund for these missing children. And what about all these cold cases and unsolved cases? You're not putting any resources there, but you have resources and, and time to go sit up here and wanna reinvent the wheel and say, oh, well, I think I wanna take on the, um, parole board. That is not your job, DC council. That's what the parole board is here for. And, and. So, so if the mothers of murderers feel like they, they want to see their children, go down to the prison and visit them. That's their new home, since you couldn't raise better children than that.
I agree with you. Now, and, and, and finality, cause I, I, I would love to see here because we share so much in our grief, in our loss, in our hope and aspirations for the city. But there are those who are sitting at home tonight asking, so where would these five hundred young murderers go? Are they going to Kenyon McDuffie's neighborhood? Are they going to?
Absolutely not. And that's where they should go. The, Kenyon McDuffie should open up his home, Charles Allen, all of them should open up their homes and let them come in their homes. Let them feed them and, and clothe them and see what they do to you. No, they're not going to their homes. And then you wanna sit up here on the news the other day, and he said, oh, my heart goes out to Mr. You, you don't have a heart. For you to sit down and, and put your little peon brain and, and write it on some ink or type up or have your secretary type up something as irresponsible as this. You don't have a heart, so your heart doesn't go out to Ms. Jeffries. You have a black heart. You have no heart. And obviously, you have no brain cells either. And I'm like, five hundred, where are they going? They, it, it's gonna be open season in the District of Columbia, Maryland, and Virginia. That's what's gonna happen.
Ms. Jeffries said it rightly. You don't even need to turn the camera to me. She said it rightly. It's open season. You let five hundred people off for murder.
And violent, and other violent crimes, rape.
Rape. What exactly are you telling the criminal justice system? That they're no longer needed because we're not gonna prosecute. And Kenyon McDuffie is a young man who sat in my face and told me that there was no need for a law in the District of Columbia making it mandatory for a parent, when their child is missing for twenty-four hours, to actually come forward and admit the child is missing. He said that to my face. Muriel Bowser has been a loser when it comes to law enforcement and has sided against the police department. And the Metropolitan Police Union has come out in opposition of this particular bill because they know exactly where those particular criminals are gonna go. They're gonna go right back into the neighborhood where they were violent and they will do more violence and.
That's right.
And for those of you following along at home, cause y'all are all radical and everything, and y'all don't think people understand, the only way that you can operate gentrification in the neighborhood is to make it less safe. The less safe it is, your housing prices go down, the less likely you are to stay. And that means that other people can come in and develop your property for far less than they would normally expend it for. It is a game plan, ladies and gentlemen, and you need to come against, you need to come against those particular. And it's not because Trayon White is black that he's representing you rightly. No, it's not the color of skin, it's the content of his character. And when his character knows that a one-year-old baby has been killed in his particular ward, and then to side with this particular piece of legislation, he is worthless as a representative. Phil Mendelson is worthless, Kenyon McDuffie's worthless, Charles Allen, Vincent Gray. You all need to stand up as district residents and begin putting people in office that care about your viability, your safety, and your well-being. And quite frankly, if you would allow a mayor to keep your children out of school for two years, knowing that the poorest, the blackest, the most Hispanic suffer the most in that, you are not, you are not the solution. You're part of the problem, right there. I said it to you. It ain't a shade of it. Ladies and gentlemen, uh, thank you so much for tuning in and listening to a more sane, uh, Nardine Jeffries. Because I, I believe that we're all facing the same expression of anger and hostility towards a city council that would shake your hand and look you in the eye and say if.
And come to your children's funerals, and come to the children's funeral and, and, and offer you all these warm condolences. And even Muriel Bowser, she was a councilwoman at the time Brichelle was murdered. She was the first one to send a lovely letter to the house and, oh, I'm so sorry for the loss of your daughter and blah, 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 and all this stuff. And I understand that she may not be in agreement with this particular bill, but she's done a fight the police department in the district. And, and, and that's just a total slap in the face and, and disrespectful because, you know, people keep sitting out here and complaining about the police. But, I mean, come on, let's, let's be real. Look at what's going on out here. You, you want the community, the police itself, really? So you want more innocent people to be dead? Because those are the only people being murdered.
Exactly.
So it's, 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 it's crazy, and people need to realize, please, don't think this cannot happen to you, because I'm telling you, I was one of those people. I never thought I would live to seek to bury my child. I've always had, I had everything planned out, her education, her homes. We were, come from an educated family, you know, just doing all the right things. I never in a million years could have dreamt, in my worst nightmare, that this would be my reality. So don't ever think that, oh, that just happens in Ward Eight. Yeah, it's a lot going on in Ward Eight, but make no mistake. It's going on all over this area. And if we don't come together, this is a, this is not a black thing and a poor thing. This is a human thing, and we need to come together as human beings. We need to unite, and we need to fight. Like our lives depend on it, because guess what? Our lives actually do depend on it. We can no longer be sitting targets and open season here. We, we've got to do something, so please come down tomorrow and, and, and make your voices heard. Let's be the voices for all the voiceless victims out here.
Exactly. And I can't say that I know families that have suffered the loss of life in their families uh, through murder, and some have gone unsolved. Your sitting at home doesn't change anything either. I know you're upset. I know you're saddened. But sometimes, there comes a moment in life where you gotta stand up for what's right and become the voice that's missing in DC. I wanna thank Nardine Jeffries for being with us tonight. God bless you and for the battles you're facing, and I hope that we talk again uh, very soon on my network uh, about actually recovering from this particular situation. It's a long and tedious process, and none of us should ever have to go through it. We love you and we love Rochelle. God bless you. Thank you so much for coming on tonight.
Thank you so much, and you make a good point. There is no timeline to our, our, our grieving. So there shouldn't be a timeline. Once they have been sentenced to whatever their time is, let them serve that sentence, because even if they serve their thirty years and we're still here, we are still grieving and we are still dying bit by bit every day.
Yeah. No one can ever.
Never. And I hate for, yeah, and I hate for other people. I hate for people to join this club that no one has to be a part of, and that is a childless, you know, club. You don't wanna be in, in our club. You don't wanna be in this sorority of, of parents of dead children, because it's not fun. We may make it look easy, but let me tell you, it is not easy. It's not an easy walk. It's a very, very difficult walk. I take pills to do almost everything.
Yeah. Three o'clock in the morning, it ain't easy. It ain't easy. DC, are you tired of murderers walking away? We'll find out. We'll find out tomorrow whether you're gonna be down there. You'll come down there marching for anything else. Won't you march for the innocent? We'll be back, ladies and gentlemen, with more of the best and urban conservative talk right after these messages. We love you. Nardine, thank you so much.